Wanda, would you please read the...
Yes, sir. And orders with South Carolina County in the last 1976, section 30 dash 4 dash 80. Here's a theme as set as amended notification of meeting and meeting agenda were posted at least 24 hours prior to meeting on the county council building at a publicly accessible place on the county website and a copy of the agenda was provided to the local news media and all persons or organizations requesting verification.
Thank you. Mr. Ral, would you do the...
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for our time to come together to make decisions on the benefit of Jasper County. Guide us with wisdom, guide us with surety tonight as we do those things for the citizens. We ask for all those things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The approval of the consent agenda. Two minutes for the 110 and 120. Is there any discussion? Like to have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Comment? All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. All against, say nay. Approve the regular agenda. I'd like to amend the agenda to take off item eight. Any other discussion? Like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Mr. Van Hessen, presentation from South Carolina County's Workers' Compensation Award Presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you for having me here tonight. It's a pleasure to be before you. My name is Van Hessen. I'm the Director of Risk Management Services with South Carolina Association of Counties. Of course Jasper County is a member of the association. We also choose to take part of our Workers' Compensation Insurance Trust. So it's a pleasure to always be before council and especially when we get to bring good news and recognition as far as for Jasper County as well. The reason I am here tonight is Jasper County was recently recognized at our most recent annual membership meeting with our insurance trust form in the category of best experience modifier rating. And just a very, very, very short explanation what experience modifier rating is and how it's important to you all. All businesses, industries, local governments are all classified by certain codes where it kind of takes into account the type of work that's being done and with hazards with job classifications and that sort of thing. With this in mind, through a complex system of calculations going as far back as four years ago utilizing a three-year tail of your losses is how you come ultimately to the experience modifier rating. In essence, a rating of one is expected losses for your type of work. Anything above a one kind of gets on you're paying more than what you actually should. Anything below one, again, there shows that you're saving money and doing good things. So in this particular case, to short and sweet, Jasper County actually was recognized as far as our second runner-up this year for best experience modifier rating. We always recognize the top three counties. Jasper County, this past year during the current policy year, your rating was a .73. So in correlation, that means you save 27% of what your premiums would have expected to be or should have been with a rating of one, which is, you know, a neutral rating. The big piece of that though comes into the dollar side of that. What does that 27% equate to? For you all here in Jasper County, it equated to a savings of roughly $211,000 based off what your premiums would have otherwise been had you experienced recognized losses or, you know, even more if it had been above and beyond. So, you know, definitely, you know, should be commended for the work that's being done on this. You know, your demonstration of support has been there in recent years with the growth of the HR department, risk management side. As a result, you're seeing some of the benefits and the savings from this. So it not only demonstrates Jasper County's commitment to safety and help of his employees, but also is good stewards to the taxpayers' money. And of course, in today's times, the more money we can save, you know, $200,000 can go a long ways as far as in general funds, as far as for other improvements and things you would like to do in the county. So with that said, congratulations Jasper County on this year being second runner-up as far as in our best experience modifier. We look forward to hopefully being back next year as far as to recognize you for even better achievements than that. But at this point, if I could ask Nicole or Miranda, anyone else with the HR department to come up front? Congratulations on all your hard work.
Nicole, would you mind for the council's benefit, all this benefit, just introducing yourself and your team and give a brief overview of what they do?
Absolutely. I'm Nicole Holt, the HR Director, also the Risk Manager. I recently started training, oh, last year, Miranda Graham. She's HR Generalist. We all work as a team with everything, child cross-training in all areas, but she has dove into the risk management side and really likes it and is doing her great job. And then Tina also handles the payroll, Tina McElmore, which is intertwined with workers' comp as well as our short-term disability workers' comp payments, things like that. So it takes a whole team to do the job.
And she's been very humble in that there's a lot that goes into the risk management and the insurance side of workers' comp property and liability, a lot of moving parts every day throughout. So congratulations and the opportunity.
Well, thank you and thank you for coming here and explaining to them, you know, what it means.
What the average number would be for the state?
Average, you mean as far as modifier rate? I don't know as far as state, but I can tell you as far as the counties go, we, it ranges, the number one that's tied this year was a .66 and then we go as far as to 1.27 or something, but as an average of all 42 counties that we have in the trust, the average mod rate was a .91 across board for all 42 counties on average.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. After that good news, we have some more good news. Presentation of South Jasper County 250 Committee, Mr., I'm going to use Smitty Core on the line. I don't know you as well. We'll tell him again after I've gone in, Sir Ral, and I said, who's this?
Mr. Chairman, council members, staff. Tonight on behalf of the Jasper County 250 Committee, we would like to update you on the plans and workings of the committee. The first, I wanted to give our new council members and the public some background. In the 2018, 2018 rather, the South Carolina 250 Commission was chartered by the South Carolina General Assembly to properly commemorate the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution in South Carolina. Through grants and the efforts of local county 250 committees, the South Carolina Commission is helping to celebrate and promote our state's pivotal role in the fight for independence by educating, engaging, and inspiring both the South Carolinians and its visitors. To that end, in the spring of 2023, the Jasper County Council passed a resolution to form the Jasper County 250 Committee. Since then, the committee has been laying plans, accumulating grants, and currently implementing portions of the strategic plan. The mandate for the committee's efforts through 2030 is to first educate and create greater awareness of the American Revolution in present-day Jasper County. Secondly, to better preserve and promote its historical assets from the period. And third, to promote historical tourism to our sites. With not only a mandate to promote the more well-known people and events from the American Revolution period, but to include other lesser-known folks in our local history such as enslaved people, Native Americans, and women. The Jasper County 250, with the advice and support of several experts such as the South Carolina Battlefield Preservation Trust and the South Carolina 250 Site Advisory, have begun the process by building from the ground up with a mind for the long term. During our preliminary research, a significant theme emerged in the form of the Provo invasion of present-day Jasper County, that this British invasion was the nexus for the battles of Hurysburg and Cusahatchee sites and the British visit to the Old House, to Old House Plantation between those two events in the spring of 1779. The Jasper County 250 focus has been to work on the basics first, such as properly marking all three major sites in the county, extensive research, and careful planning for the enhancement of these sites. In our county, we are most fortunate to have a premier national registered site in that of the Tomb of Thomas Hayward, Old House Plantation site. The birthplace and final resting place of Thomas Hayward, a founding father of our country, a signer of the Declaration of Independence, an ardent patriot leader of the U-Haul militia, and therefore one of our country's first veterans, or county's first veteran, rather. And it's our responsibility and duty as a county to preserve and promote this particularly precious asset of national importance as well as the others. Early last year, the Jasper County 250 Committee presented to council a strategic plan for the enhancement and promotion of this site, as well as a cost share request as part of a large site grant application to the South Carolina 250 Commission. In the spring of 2024, we were awarded this premier grant from the state. And thus far, the Jasper County 250's efforts have received broad support from not only the state and Jasper County, but also from the city of Hardyville, the town of Resil, local DAR and SAR chapters, and many volunteers. And at this time, just a reminder in your packet, you have this strategic plan that we gave you about a year ago, okay, preceded by a letter to the council outlining these same types of plans and so forth, for you, for your reference, all right? At this time, I'll turn the program over to Kathy Decoursey. Kathy spearheaded many aspects of this project, these projects, and she is a real dynamo and a doer. All right.
Okay. Thanks. Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, council members, administration, and staff. As soon as the first meeting of the 250 Committee was convened, we identified the three locations. If you don't know, we have the Hurysburg Battle Site, we have the Cusahatchee Battle Site, and we have Old House Thomas Hayward Tomb Site. Immediately, we started identifying what we needed to interpret at these sites. As you can see on your screen, the first one was Hurysburg. Hurysburg was an early township in 1731 of Swiss immigrants. We also did a Battle of Hurysburg on April 29th. April 28th and 29th, Preboz marched through Hurysburg after he seized Savannah. We have Sherman's troop who also followed the same path. And then we have the Maroons. If you don't know about the Maroons, the Maroons were members that were enslaved or runaway slaves that lived in the swamp of the Savannah River area. Next slide, please. From there, we moved on to, we moved on to Old House in Thomas Hayward Junior Tomb Site. We have a panel that's going up for the Declaration of Independence with Thomas Hayward's signature and a nice little statement there. It says, "By signing the Declaration of Independence, the 56 Americans pledged their lives, their fortunes, and their sacred honor." That goes without standing that these men were true patriots. We also have a panel on the rice and the enslaved. At the Thomas, at the Old House Plantation, Daniel Hayward, the father of Thomas, was quite the entrepreneur out there. We know that he had rice shipments out there. We know that he cultivated rice, cotton. He also had a warehouse. And then we have a bio of Daniel and Thomas Hayward Junior. We will have more panels going out there, hopefully in the near future. We have to take the time to create all these, find the right verbiage and the right graphics. So after we got the panel started, we decided that we needed to clean up the cemetery. So these are before and after pictures. The before, that stone had not been cleaned probably in many years. We got the professional product of D2 biologicals and we went out and cleaned every stone out there. They are nice and shiny now. In March of every year, the annual Sons of American Revolution has a pilgrimage out there, wreath laying ceremony. This was the picture from last year's. They are going to be out there March 1st this year, if you'd like to come out and attend. In October, we did an archaeological dig. As you know, you guys had approved Lamar Institute to come out and do further archaeological study out there. This archaeological study is building on two previous archaeological digs out there. So they were out there for 15 days. We had 97 Jasper County students participate in our junior archaeologist program and we had nine volunteers participated in the archaeological assisted program. It was great to see these kids come out. They loved playing in the dirt. They loved learning about archaeology. And the picture there with the bricks, that is part of the foundation of the Old House and they are exposed now. They just scratched the surface, so there is more that we can expand upon there if we can get some more archaeological work done out there. In October, at the close of the archaeological dig, we had a tea party out there. We had 28 individuals participate in our tea party and we had a living history interpreter, Peggy Pickett, who did Dorothy Sinkler Richardson. So this was our first event out there. It was a success, I would say, to have 28 individuals. There has not been anything out there in many years other than the annual pilgrimage. So this was our first opportunity to show off the site. We also finished up filming with Wide Awake Films. They were part of our grant through the site grant through SE250. They are a premier historian film company out of Charleston in Oklahoma, Oregon. So they did a segment with Dan and Rita. You see the picture there. We were going through some of the archaeological finds. They took some photographs of the great finds that we found out there. They also did interviews with Dan and Rita. And then we moved on to the actual documentary of Daniel Hayward. We had two actors that portrayed Daniel Hayward. One was an older, one was a younger. Here you see him signing the Declaration of Independence. We did the filming at the Verdiere House out in Beaufort. It was absolutely beautiful. And then you see our younger Daniel Hayward when he was injured in the revolution with a shot to his arm. That was, that was a great two days that we spent with them. So future events that we have planned. March 21st, we'll be partnering with the Morris Center for Low Country Heritage for Women's History Month. We'll have two interpreters portraying, one for Eliza Lucas Pinkney and Lydia Devant, two significant revolutionary era women. May 2nd through May 3rd, in your packets, you will find, you will find a save a date card. We are asking you to reserve the May 3rd date specifically for a rededication ceremony. But for two days, we'll be hosting a colonial fair and rededication ceremony at the Old House Site. We are working on making May 2nd the school day. We have reached out to several of the schools that participated in the archaeological dig and they are excited to hear about our next adventure out there. And then we'll also reach out to more schools through the Morris Center. The Morris Center has Fuel the Mine Program where the local schools are able to come in and learn about the exhibits out there. They have the Battle of Honey Hill, the Catawba Indian, and then they have the, the second part of the Battle of Honey Hill. So those school kids have started two weeks ago. They have been coming out and we'll start handing out flyers to those schools as well. July 26th will once again partner with the Morris Center for Low Country Heritage on a living history interpreter portraying Rebecca Mott. The Morris Center will be hosting a Fort Mott exhibit. In 2026, tentative, we are in discussions with Georgia Salzberger Society to provide a combined event whereby guests can participate in a discussion at Millstone Landing regarding the history of the Hurysburg Settlement. And then they, they will take a boat ride over to Ebenezer and to all the historic Ebenezer Settlement. Hurysburg and Ebenezer were early sister settlements in 1731 and 1734 respectively. As of date, February 1st, this is how much funding we have received in grants. These are all grants that we ourselves, Smitty, myself, and Linda have applied for. We work diligently looking for grant money. I think it's great that we've been able to raise $276,000 so far. We've had great, great people to help us support this. Who is Thomas Ezekiel Miller? If anybody's driving up Route 17 coming out of Hardyville heading towards Ruth Gyllenhaal, you'll see this Thomas E. Miller Boulevard. It struck me as odd that we have this and I didn't know who Thomas Miller was. So I started doing some research into Thomas Miller. And I'm not going to give you any hints yet. You'll have to come out on May 3rd to find out what Thomas Ezekiel Miller has to do with Thomas Hayward Junior. Little secrets. So there's still so much more to explore. When the archaeologists were here for the three weeks, we didn't even get to touch the marsh. We know that there's structures. You see these two structures out there. We know these are out there in the marsh. We know they're a part of a historic building or something that was taking place out there. There was just too much to scratch the surface. We need to look forward and get some more grant funding for more archaeological work. And then I'm going to turn this back over to Smitty.
I want to change the focus for just a minute to the Thomas Hayward Site alone. I mean, this is the premier site. This will be the centerpiece of our historic theme, as I mentioned earlier, the Provo Invasion. Start to think for a minute, if you would, of the business person. This is an opportunity to bring people into the county. That's what, this is our third mandate. I would say for me, it's my first mandate. I'm very, very passionate about history, have been all my life, but this goes to the business side of things. And so you see, first of all, we have a site plan in front of you. You can see, you get your bearings, you see existing, the word existing road, that's the Avenue of Oaks coming in. These are Oaks that were planted in the 1740s. So all of this, we see those as very significant assets for the site. It is always amazing to hear people from the outside who haven't been to the site before, talk about the significance of it. They didn't know it was there, including my own mother, who's, who's from here. She's a... She's, her hometown is Hardyville, you know, so it's amazing who's never gone back up in there. So the idea here is that we want to turn this into something of a significant interpretive park, alright? So you'll see the features there in front of you. Right now underway, about to get underway, this is part of, part of the reason for this presentation tonight, is the part layout of parking areas. Arbors work on the oats. Removal of large pine trees that are threatening the cemetery, which is a red square area over there in the lower part of the site plan. And a host of other things. And you can see in the legend, all the identifications of things that will be on the site, okay, including the interpretive signs, including the house site itself, okay, what we will be doing there later. There'll be an outdoor classroom at number 15 and on and on we can go. The marsh is a whole nother world. The marsh was significant because it was a mill. It was a place, as Kathy mentioned earlier, it was a lot of commerce. Ships used to come up in there from Broad River and military as well as trading ships, okay? It's astounding what's there, what, what happened there over the years. So we want to continue to build on that. The archaeologist of the Lamar Institute, as you will meet her if you attend the May meeting, she was, she's done many sites, including St. Simon's, Fort Frederica, Purvisburg. They were the Purvisburg group that did, did the dig there. She said this site is one of the most significant pristine sites she's ever seen. That's mainly because the Coole family out there, who, the Senator Harry Coole family, who kept, who stayed at the site, kept the site very pristine. There are layers upon layers of history. Now what does all this mean for Jasper County? I want to talk about goals for just a second. Do we have a slide for that? I'm going to move, I'm going to come back to this in a second.
Yeah.
Next one, please.
Okay.
I should, I'm on my homework. Alright, so first of all, after this site, we had to do certain things in order. Obviously, we had to wait on the dig. So we, that took some patience, but we had to do that first. The title abstract, the title abstract has been done. The title abstract goes back into the Kings era, back into the colonial era, make sure we know everything about the site from a record keeping standpoint, right? Nothing's been missed. And then the archaeological dig comes in, it tells, tells the untold story through physical artifacts, right? Now those artifacts, a large portion of artifacts that were uncovered were put back in the ground because we had so much duplication, so much quantity. But what the county, I think, our responsibility, the citizens of the county, is to properly curate and store these artifacts, including the ones from the previous digs in 1965 at the Charleston Museum and then the 1995 dig by Chikora Foundation, right? Because these are, these, these are priceless. These are priceless items that someday perhaps will have a way to officially display those in the county. Enhanced on the mill site, absolutely incredible, the wharf itself, all that being, we want to someday recreate that. That's, needs to be a whole nother archaeological dig. And then of course, the creme de la creme of attracting cultural tourists is augmented reality. That comes in the form of the phone, that comes in the form of, of the glasses, the binoculars, like you've been to Fort Marion in Charleston, you've seen those giant augmented reality. What that does is allows a person to see what was there, okay? And get a feel, so in a way it kind of becomes alive for the visitor. Development of the battle site at Cusahatchee is a roadside interpretive park. We have an opportunity now to purchase the Cusahatchee battle site, okay? What I think was the ground zero of that site from a local owner. And we, we, this will make a great, we're not asking the county to purchase the site. State will purchase the site. The county must commit to taking care of it long term, okay? We will take care of putting up the interpretive signs. The historical market for the Battle of Cusahatchee is in production as we speak, should be in very soon. So this is pretty good timing. So that's one, that's one consideration for the county. We also want, obviously, these official annual events like the pilgrimages, which we'll, we want to expand on that with the local historical groups and so forth, we want that to be an annual event. Because that May 2nd, 3rd, for this upcoming event that we're putting on is not by accident. That is coincides with the invasion of Provo into the area and the Battle of Cusahatchee the next day, okay? So there's a reasoning behind that. And we want to make that an annual event that where you can start to bring tourists to that site and so forth. Obviously, we've got some logistical issues out there, as you can see from the parking. The parking, as we're sitting on the site plan, kind of pushes us into one corner because so much needs to be done at the site itself. We want, another goal is placing the UHOD district on the National Register of Historic Places, okay? The UHOD district is one of the most significant patriotic, patriotic cultural sites, I think, anywhere around. And I say that boldly, I'm including, I'm including the northern, the northern states because of things that were done there. And the centerpiece of that is the Old House site. The, developing the learning labs and ongoing archaeological digs at the Old House site to create in an expedient fashion, a first-class historical tourism experience in Jasper County. And of course, therefore, the potential benefit of tourism dollars, okay? When these groups come in, like these pilgrimages and many others that we'll have this year, including our own event, this will bring people from the outside in. Right now, unfortunately, in Jasper County, you know, we don't, we, we, we want to bring those dollars in and leave them here and these nice people can go back to where they came from, okay? That's, that's really what we're after. And the county obviously needs, we have a lot. We're rich in history. It just has to be uncovered, promoted and taken care of ongoing, alright? Alright, let's, let me go to the ass and get down to brass tacks here for a minute. Next slide. And then maybe you can go back to the bathroom. For the Old House site, which is our primary focus right now, because we're on a timeline, we have to get this grant money spent by May. And I know that Kim Burgess is tired of us asking for payments to be made, but someday it will end, but maybe not. We hope not, keep going, right? We want to establish, first of all, we want to have power and water at the Old House site for a number of obvious reasons. How about electric is ready to do that. We're not, we're not asking for you to pay for the hookup, we're not asking you to pay for the well. We're asking you to set up an account to do that ongoing, alright? That's a consideration. And we think that's an important feature to have out there. It will be much cheaper than to have that than it will be for a watering plan with a very extensive landscaping we're going to be doing out there very soon, which has already been funded, okay? The other thing that is not covered by grants is the removal of large pines in critical areas of the site. Now these are a group of trees, for example, that are threatening the cemetery. We had a near miss during Helene, okay? And then of course, a newly designated parking area. Why didn't we plan earlier for this? Well, we had no idea where the parking was going to be. The archaeological dig dictated that, right? Okay? So we're, we're working on that. It's going to be sparse, but we have other ideas long term to help with parking, okay? And then a commitment to raising the maintenance profile for the site. This site and others, we take on Cusahatchee. Purvisburg's being well taken care of by the town of Hardyville. That worked out really well. That was already sort of underway. Linda had already had, got that off to, and Kathy off to a quick start. And we have, still have interpretive signs and so forth to install out there to sort of get that in order. But again, what does it mean to raise the maintenance profile? We put up all these things out there, the site, spent all this money. It's funny, it coincided with the baseball fields tonight. Now we decided to spend money as a private group many years ago on volunteer park. We said, "We're not going to put all this infrastructure in this site until we have a commitment from the county and also the town of Ridgeland. This is going to be, you know, not taken back or taken over," okay? And then everyone was more of the support of him cooperating. This site to me, from a, from a responsibility and custodianship standpoint, is highly important. This is a site, this is the birthplace, burial place of a founder, founding father of the United States of America. Very reason we're able to sit here tonight and have municipal government work there, alright? Very important. And then of course, as I said too, we need, we need to be able to commit to this because it's going to take more maintenance to take care of these places properly as we go along. And then Cusahatchee, a smaller version of this, commitment to own, clear and maintain the site if purchased by the South Carolina 250 and turned over to the county, so to speak, okay? Any questions?
Well, first of all, I want to thank Catherine Decoursey for inviting me out last Friday. It was a wealth of information. I had no idea that place was there and it's really cool. So I hope that we all show up on the 3rd and support it and, yeah, I think it's, it's incredible. Everybody needs to see it. It's really, just as a forefather, the guy that signed the Declaration of Independence is right here in our backyard. It's pretty incredible.
It is.
So I just want to thank her publicly for that.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, Smitty, I want to say congratulations on the job that you and your entire team and Ms. Kathy and everybody else, a huge effort. A lot of people that participated and have done a phenomenal job and to see where, I remember doing a class trip there when I was at Thomas Hayward Academy as a little kid, going out there and seeing it. It's just amazing what is, what is that today and it's all because of your efforts. So congratulations for what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I again want to echo some of the thank yous. Thank you to your organization for, for what you're doing to preserve the history and, and learn about it. I will tell you that I'm a history buff myself and when my son comes home from a field trip, I think back in October from the site, teaches me something that I didn't know about where I've lived my whole life. That was pretty neat, so thank you.
Yes, and that makes a point you both made. We need to roll, we really got to roll our kids through there, meaning that we've got to educate them repeatedly. What we found out through this process is our, we all knew this, where our students, young people particularly and adults are woefully deficient on American history, number one. There's not even a question about the founding of this country on the SAT test. I think that's terrible, okay? And so we, we really can't understand who we are until we understand, this is where, we have this amazing site and other sites in this county and an opportunity, and that is one of our mandates. We're already off to a good start with the exposure to the young people and adults through the archaeological dig, because that's, that attracts people. We want to bring the tourists in, obviously. People are enamored with this, with, with historical tourism. But thanks for your support and we've got a lot to do for guests getting to the next phase, if you will. We want to see it through. We need to do it with expediency. We need to get this rolling as a business, get this, these folks coming in. You'll get something to see and talk about. Thank you.
I just want to thank you very much myself. And I'll tell you, the enlightenment, I was here, I came here 15 years ago and knew nothing about history. But every time I looked around, there was something. Started with Honey Hill, started with Civil War. You go, you go down New River, there's all Civil War down there, nobody knows about it, all the art rice fields down there. You're doing a great job. Thank you very much.
And thank you to Chairman Kemp for serving on the committee from day one. Thanks for supporting. Thank you.
My next one is my comments. I just wanted to introduce Ms. Libby Malfris. She is Ridgeland Council member. I'll get you up later, I'm just introducing you, okay? And Keith Horton, our clerk of the court. Thank you very much for showing up. Appreciate it. The next meeting is on March 3rd in Hardyville. Just for everybody to know. Also, I just want to congratulate Dr. Penou, Chancellor of USC Bay. Post and courier credited him with 12 Black leaders to note in South Carolina. That's something. All South Carolina, we have one of the 12. I'm sure we have many more, but to be recognized is one thing. It's important. So congratulations, especially during the month of Black history. Thank you. And the reason I talk my comments is something special that I want to make sure somebody hears it, because we have the public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So I want to catch all the people that are going to leave after the public comments, okay? So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Citizen comments, and we have one, Ms. Malfris.
Thank you, Council. As you said, I'm Libby Malfris, Ridgeland Town Council. I just wanted to come tonight to share some concerns I had about transparency. In our most recent Ridgeland Town Council meeting, Councilman Van Geesen came and I was excited to hear him speak and talk about wanting to work together, the Ridgeland Town Council and the County Council. And as I've said before, we're, I'm certainly a fan of that. I support that. I think that having that collaboration and communication between the county and the municipalities is so important. And Councilman Van Geesen, you know, talked about particularly in the areas of development. And so when I left that meeting of the Town Council, I was very optimistic. I felt good because I thought, you know, here we have new council members, you know, maybe we're going to finally get that communication that we need between the town and the county. But I was shocked when I heard just the next day about a meeting that was held with certain members of Town and County Council with Mr. Robert Graves about the Chelsea and Tecton Hall developments. Now I was surprised because I certainly hadn't heard anything about this meeting being on the Town Council. And my concern as a community member is when certain members of the Town and County meet with developers, it doesn't always look good. It's not a very transparent look. It's my understanding that Mr. Van Geesen, Mr. Kemp, Mr. Fishburne, Mr. Rhodes and the Town Administrator met with Mr. Graves, talk about Chelsea development, the Tecton Hall development. I don't know what was discussed. I wasn't a part of that, obviously. But I think when we think about transparency for our communities, that's just not a good look. So I come tonight to ask for better transparency when we're having these types of conversations. We know this development is probably the development that has brought the most public concern and input and interest. So when we have these major issues that we absolutely know the public is very concerned about, when we have private meetings that involve only certain members of council, Town or County, it just doesn't look good. So I encourage you to think about the optics of these types of meetings. And I absolutely want to meet the full County Council, the full Town Council. How can we get together and talk about lots of issues, not just developments, but lots of issues? Because as we know, if it impacts the county, it impacts the town and vice versa. So that's just my plea for the Council tonight. Thoughts to consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Resolutions. Consideration of Resolution 2025-11 to approve the appointment of Mr. Samuel Lawton to the Jasper County Library Board of Trustees. Ms. Wanda?
The Library Board of Trustees is a seven-member board. Mr. Stuart Shatz did not wish to be reappointed to the board, which is now left vacant. The ladies of the Pratt Library would like to refer Mr. Samuel Lawton to fill the seat on board. Mr. Lawton is willing to accept this appointment by council if they choose to do so. Staff recommendation if council decides to do this is to ask you to consider the appointment of Mr. Samuel Lawton to the Library Board of Trustees to replace Mr. Shatz. There are currently no other candidates that have applied for this position and this will be for a four-year term.
Is there any discussion? I'd like to have a motion.
Make a motion that we approve to appoint Mr. Samuel Lawton to the Jasper County Library Board of Trustees.
Go ahead, a second.
I'll second.
Any comment? All those in favor say aye and raise their hand. Anybody opposed? Consideration of Resolution 2025-12 for the ratification of the contract for acquisition of Cusahatchee property. Chief Wells, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Thank you. The resolution for you is a request to ratify an option contract for the purchase of property for the replacement Cusahatchee Fire Station, bearing tax map parcel numbers 087-00-05-008 and 009, with 2.6 acres and 0.92 acres respectively. We have been in negotiations with the property owner. The probate court has finally agreed to release said property for subject to sale within the option contract at purchase price of $350,000. We're asking that the administrator have the authority to exercise the option in due course and proceed with closings on the property and matters related thereto.
Mr. Van Geesen? Any discussion?
No.
Ms. Dorzillo? Any discussion?
Chief Wells, can you go into detail a little bit more on exactly what this is for?
So the Cusahatchee Fire Station, A, doesn't have proper setbacks. There's not enough property for us to actually remodel the station and bring it to the current code. It was abandoned, I shouldn't say abandoned. We do not staff it due to the toxic mold intrusion. Equipment is still there, but we needed additional property in order to do that. The septic system that is on, that services that station is not on the property for that station. So again, the footprint of that property that exists is very small, so we needed to find a, an alternative for the property. And this was what we had identified. That's the first one. And it is the property that sits next to the Tiger Express on the, if you're, if you're looking at it, it's on the right-hand side, I believe it's sealed, Cusahatchee, BP. Phase 1 environmentals identify that there's no environmental concerns and so we have made the request to execute acquisition.
So this money is for the purchase of additional property so that later you can develop that site.
Yes, so we can build the fire station on that and then we'll come back to the council for liquidation of that property or however they want to move.
Thank you, Chief Wells.
Mr. Salz?
Mr. Sauls, any questions? Mr. Raul?
Now, this is definitely a long time coming to get the Cusahatchie Station back up and going. Hopefully, this land will suit the needs for years to come. Obviously, I'm very familiar with the old Cusahatchie Station, it's got a history there, and it's definitely needed some new ground, so, does this meet everything that you all need?
Yes, sir.
Here we know I'd like to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any comment? All those in favor say aye, raise their hand, all against?
Thank you.
Number 12, consideration of Resolution 2025-13 for the request of Low Country Council of Governments for your approval of Brett Reed, operations manager at Builders Source, to serve as Jasper County's business representative as a new member on the Low Country Workforce Board.
Yes, sir. We received a letter from the Low Country Council of Governments from Executive Director Sabrina Graham, and she wrote a letter formally requesting your approval for the top four Brett Reed, operation manager, Builders First Source, to serve as a new member on the Low Country Workforce Board. Mr. Reed has accepted their invitation to serve, however, the members of the board must be appointed by the County Council, and with that being said, the information is in your packet, and if you so desire, we would like to ask you to consider Mr. Brett Reed for an appointment to the Low Country Workforce Board as the newest member of that board for a three-year term.
Is there any discussion? I'd like to have a motion.
Make a motion that we appoint Brett Reed, operations manager, Builders First Source, to serve as the Jasper County Business Representative for the Low Country Workforce Board.
Do I have a second? Second. Any comment? All those in favor say aye and raise their hand. All against? Number 13, consideration of Resolution R-2025-03 for a special services contract with Heather Rath Consulting. Mr. Raul.
Thank you.
Did I pronounce that right?
You did, you did. Thank you. Sorry. Mr. Chairman, members of council, this particular resolution was teed up for your consideration at your first meeting in January, pulled it off the agenda, thought it was pretty unfair, we had new council members, but hopefully, since then, after your strategic planning session, and in other meetings, you've had a chance to meet Ms. Heather Rath, this particular resolution authorizes the hiring of her as a special services contract. She basically works as an extension of staff on some key areas that I have assigned to her, and it's been very helpful for staff. You had a chance perhaps to review it, but I'll just remind you real quickly, she's on her way, by the way, but stuck in a traffic accident, not in the accident, but detained by it. The Levy Limehouse Sewer Connection Project is probably the largest one that she worked on the last several months to put that package together, there's still more work to do there, because we're going to also ask for funding from the Rural Infrastructure Authority, so use her help in assembling that request as well. The major work that she's working on currently is the management of our opioid settlement funds. As you may know, she wrote our opioid plan that was opted by the council, she makes sure that we are compliant with all the reporting that's required to the South Carolina Opioid Board, on tracking that funding and how we're spending it, and making sure that we're drawing it down before we lose it. There's certain restrictions there, overdose tracking, and the education incentive that she has put together, an RFP for, we've evaluated it, and that'll be coming to you hopefully at your next meeting, where we'll start a PR campaign to explain to the public what you're doing and how you're using those funds. In addition to that, one thing that is a priority I know of yours is affordable housing, she's been very helpful with affordable housing, issues specifically in assuring that the county has an opportunity to qualify for funding that we have traditionally not been able to qualify for. The qualified allocation plan is something the state has, and it concerns getting access to low-income housing tax credits, and we have not been very successful in that arena in the past, and so, she has been very successful in proposing changes to the state and working with the local legislative delegation to do that, and has made some significant changes that put us back in the game, so we're very pleased with that. That was a lot of information about her, you've had a chance to meet her, but I'm respectfully requesting that you consider adopting the resolution so that we can keep her on board, it's an annual contract.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Van Geen? No. Mr. Dorzillo? Mr. Sauls? Mr. Raul?
You said it's an annual contract, so approved, it'll go from date of approval to it ends the next calendar year, same?
Yes, sir, we would come back to you then, review things, and you'd have a chance to see her progress, give a good report, she usually does a couple of reports annually for you, of work that she's doing more frequently to me, I forgot to mention the value of it, it's $2,300 a month, so it's a total of $27,600.
I'd like to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for R2025-03, a special service contract with Heather Rath Consulting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comment? All those in favor say aye and raise their hand. All against? Passed. Number 14, David Tetter, consideration of Resolution R-2025-14 for the retention of services of, from Finger, Melick, Brooks, and LeBrusse, P.A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, you may recall from our retreat that codes enforcement is a priority of this council, let's pass, all administration, myself, members of codes enforcement from our various departments, been together to discuss what we needed. We brought in Richardson LeBrusse of this law firm, who sat with us for an afternoon, and we kind of discussed where we thought things were, and where we thought things could go, and after our retreat, having a little more duration from the council, we asked them to prepare a proposal to help us update our codes enforcement, bring it up to speed, provide better, efficient, and more focused approach to fixing up codes enforcement. They've provided a proposal to assist us in this, which is in your package, they've also prepared a short presentation, which I'd like for them to come up and give to you about what they propose to do. I have Richardson LeBrusse here, and this Associate Brittany Ward, both of them have extensive government experience, working with other governments in Low Country, so without further ado, I'll turn it over to y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Tetter, and Mr. Chairman, members of the county council, that administration, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Richardson LeBrusse, as Mr. Tetter mentioned, with Finger Melick, Brooks, and LeBrusse on Hilton Head. We are a full-service law firm that does work for a number of different local governments in the area, but we are privileged to be here tonight, and as Dave mentioned, got to meet with Ms. Wagner and Chief Wells and Mr. Tetter to discuss some of the issues that y'all were facing earlier this, I guess, 2024, and we have now kind of gone through and done a very cursory review of your code ordinances, to kind of look at things and get a better grasp of the issues that y'all face from a code enforcement standpoint. Y'all are in a difficult position, just to speak frankly, because you are unincorporated in Jasper County, it's a big area, you've got about 30,000 residents, I understand, and you have a staff that often has, you know, there are different areas that may overlap, whether this is going to be the responsibility of the fire code, is this going to be a building code issue, or is this going to be a land development code? So, in looking at your thing, and looking at your code, one of the things that we like to do is first analyze what you have and what you don't, but then also analyze it with a, not just legal mindset, but a practical considerations as well. You know, the city of Los Angeles may have one of the best property maintenance codes you ever going to find, but it needs 10,000 people to enforce it, so, let's, we look at things from a practical perspective, what can be done, what is reasonable, and then provide proposals to y'all. In thinking this through, we are recommending, at this point, a phased approach, and I will have Brittany Ward, who is one of the attorneys in our office, who has an extensive background with county law, having come from D.C. County, and just joining our firm about a month and a half, two months ago, we were welcome, we, she has been a breath of fresh air, but also just incredibly insightful and knowledgeable on all sorts of issues, local government. You're going to sit back, listen, and learn from her for a moment as well, because she has had an opportunity to really dig into your code, and she's going to present this first, this post-first phase, but if you have any questions after that, we'd be happy to answer them for you, and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you, Brittany.
Well.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm going to start this off and say, please stop me at any time with any questions, I did promise David I'd keep it under five minutes, so it's up to y'all whether that actually happens or not. So, if you have the controls, go ahead. So, first and foremost, I always say you have to know what you're trying to get, what the goal of the project's going to be, and we all have to be on the same terms as far as how we're going to get there. So, first and foremost, what are the goals here? I believe it's to ensure compliance with all the state and local federal laws. Second is going to be establishing the ordinances that meet the needs of the community administration. Richardson just pointed out, you are a growing community, some of the ordinances are from 10, 20 years ago, so what is it that you actually need now to address the needs? And lastly, it's going to be creating those clear procedures that he briefly mentioned. How do you implement that, how many individuals are going to be needed, and how do you separate them so that everybody has a clear understanding of what their role is? So, we're going to take a staged approach, as he said, this is going to be the first of four. First, it's going to be to identify, review, and amend the ordinances. Which ones actually involve code enforcement? There are ordinances that do not require code enforcement to be involved, whether they have, there are changes in state laws, state codes that now affect the local government, and affect on the county. How are those laws going to affect how we write your ordinances? Once they've been identified and we've reviewed as far as from a legal standpoint, we're then going to want to discuss strictly with the administration and the staff, they're the ones with the boots on the ground, so what is it that you need from us in order for us to implement the correct code and it be efficient for them? So, we're going to discuss their concerns, their needs, and where do they see this going in the future? We don't want to be writing code for just today, but we want to be looking forward. Next step will be an approval process. I would suggest that there be a workshop involved, therefore, the council members can sit there, you can be fully informed, you can openly discuss it, and you can have any questions answered. Those questions that can't be answered, we can go back and get those questions answered for you, and come back for a second time if needed. And finally, it's going to be an implementation. Administration's going to have to look at the ordinance, how we've changed it, what the needs are, that, the efficiency, what is going to be needed in order to implement all of it. Any questions so far? Sorry, I should have paused. So, on my very brief review so far and preparing for this evening, there are several ordinance chapters that I do believe have already been identified by our legal staff that need to be addressed. General provisions, that does include just a general overview and implementation of, I guess, how the code is being prosecuted at this time. Chapter three is going to be animals and so forth, or animals we'll talk about later on. You're also going to have buildings and building regulations, businesses, that includes business licenses, you're going to have nuisances, junkyards, noise, and litter, and finally, chapter 18, which is offenses and miscellaneous provisions. That list is not all encompassed, again, we will be reviewing it, so if there are other code sections that need to be revised and looked at, we will be looking at those as well. So, I wanted to give you a brief example of kind of the smallest of changes up to the largest amendments that can be made. For example, section 18A, general penalties. Right now, this code is stating that any offenses within your ordinances will be prosecuted as a misdemeanor. It states that there will be not a fine of 500 days or imprisonment not exceeding 30 The simplest of changes makes the biggest of differences. The state law actually states that it can be both. Your code of ordinances does not include that. That means that the courts would be, or had their hands tied, and it has to be an either-or, whereby the state code is not in agreement with that, and you can actually be fined or imprisoned. The largest of amendments, I know through conversation with Mr. Tetter, that animal control is an issue that wants, that needs to be addressed. So, these are the things that your current ordinance includes. It literally adopts Title 47 of the South Carolina Code. It states the sheriff's office is the only individual party or department that has any authority to enforce. It says that funds received from any penalties can be deposited in the general fund account, that a shelter can receive animals, and that the county can contract with private associations for these services. I am not here saying that there's anything wrong with this ordinance, but I am saying that it may not address all the needs of the county. So, potential amendments, and I have to be clear when I say potential amendments, this is not part of the phased approach right now, this is part of that element of looking forward to the future. What do we need to do right now for code enforcement to be able to go in, and what does that mean for future amendments? So, potential amendments to this chapter may be pet registration, reader licensing, redeterminations, stay in interest animals, specifically talking about running at large, animal cruelty, impoundment, adoptions, and those penalties that are associated with each one of those violations. In amending your animal control ordinance, you're going to have to allow for code enforcement officers to actually prosecute those cases, to actually have control in that topic, rather than just having the sheriff's office. So, this is an example of looking into the future, what are the needs of the county, and how do we get there right now? Any questions on that?
Yeah, I do, I am working on putting together a task force committee on the subject.
Perfect.
With Tallulah from over in Beaufort.
Know her well.
Yeah, a few other folks, so it'd be good to work, you know.
Absolutely.
Because there's a lot that we need to do here, so.
Absolutely, and again, that's that evolution of where do you need to go? Where do you want to go? And what can we do right now at this stage to help that, implement that?
Right.
So, we absolutely can, you know, add in a code, or part of the code to say that code enforcement officers can do these things, and then we can go explore, we're going to base two of what are those things? What does the county want to do? So, again, we're just giving you some examples, this is nothing set in stone, this is just me throwing out ideas of what I perceive, we speak with administration and staff and say, does this work for you? So, rather than having a general, the sheriff's office can do this, and the fire marshal can do this, and by the way, we're going to have code enforcement, and they can do all of it, it may fit the needs better for staff and administration to have them separated out, so that it is clear and defined who handles what types of code enforcement, who looks at certain codes, and who is the quickest and most efficient person and knowledgeable individual to actually handle those. I can tell you, I would be doubtful that an animal control officer would be able to walk straight into a higher code situation. Those are two completely different topics, and it would more than likely best serve the county to have individuals who are focused and understand that certain code ordinance in its entirety. Any questions? So, the bigger question, how long does this take to happen? This is a proposed timeline, it can happen quicker than this, I would hope that it would not take longer. So, first 45 days, if we're provided the opportunity to work with Jasper County, 45 days would be our legal team really digging into the code ordinances, identifying what we believe are conflicting with either federal or state laws, we review those, and we put together a presentation, a memo, to present to what will happen over the next 30 days, which would be meeting with- the next 30 days, which would be meeting with the county administration and staff, presenting those proposed amendments, discussing what we talked about earlier, which is, does this benefit you? Are we not hitting, hitting it right? Is this what you would rather be seeing in here, is what's more beneficial? The next 30 days would be that workshop that I was suggesting earlier. So to get that together, to advertise for it, to meet all the FOIA requirements, that's why that's kind of a longer period of time. After the, the workshop, you would have a period of time that we would again meet with the administration and staff to ensure that the things we hear from you and the feedback we receive from you is implemented. Following that would be the 60-day period that would be required in order to have a public hearing and the three readings of the ordinance to implement those changes and And I think I kept under five minutes. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
No, I'm excited to get this moving forward, all of it.
Norzillo.
I do have a question for Mr. Tetter. In the packet, when we would, I think we were discussing this in the packet, it showed a flat rate fee for some of it, and then hourly fee for additional work?
I'm going to let Mr. Labris answer, because it's his document, and I was going to explain that there's a, there is a reduced county rate that's being offered to us as part of the hourly rate.
But there were two parts to it. One, one part being what we're discussing now, and then a study for how many people it would take to enforce it, and that was separate, and that was on an hourly rate. So my question is, what's in this resolution now? Because I don't know we've had any discussion about whether we need both, because I think it was said that we could do both at the same time. It was...
Yes, sir, Ms., Councilman, or, excuse me, Norzillo. Yes, sir. So the way that we have proposed it is a standard flat fee of $10,500. But what we have as well is our hourly rate in case needs arise or we have to deviate from that first phase, which is that analysis of your existing code, putting it into a written report to present to your administration, your administration team, and your planning department and your fire marshal. Go through those processes, look at that. That's that second phase. That first phase is getting that report drafted, doing that analysis. That's what we have is that flat fee figure. And that is based off of our experience and looking at, you know, having drafted ordinances for other communities and knowing what it takes to actually dig down, analyze them, and compare them to what similar communities, similar places like Jasper County would have in place.
So the simple form now of my question is, are we in the first stage? Is that what we're going to be voting on now, or are we going to be voting on a larger package?
We had proposed it as your first, just that first stage.
Okay. That's what I want to know.
Make sure y'all like us before we go to stage two.
Thank you.
We got this.
Kind of things, Councilman Norzillo asked and answered the one question I have, but very concerned with code enforcement in the county has been a real driver of this whole council. I'm very versed in code enforcement with local government, and we definitely need some changes to some of our ordinances that we have here. Clearance of language of, we do, I think it's the county, have adopted the property maintenance code, which is coming up for the new adoption this county year for 24 code cycles. So that's kind of the holy grail with safety and structure. So hopefully, we can clean some language up as a common sense approach, because we still have some rural areas, but we do need to look with safety in mind with a lot of the other things. But we do have a lot of things that does need to be cleaned up in the ordinances that, that just don't belong there. And then also, the fee schedule is, we have to amend our fee schedule to go with fees and fines and assessments for courts, et cetera.
To amend your fee schedule and so forth, not necessarily for, you know, the penalties. Those are the court codes, generally speaking. If it is broad, depending on how the action's broad, you can do, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not behind me there, but correct me if I'm wrong, Brittany, but generally speaking, when we would take this action to court, the court would determine what they believe was the appropriate remedy, whether it be a $500 fine, the maximum permitted under South Carolina law for that, the imprisonment that we had talked about with that general provision. But then in your ordinance itself, sometimes you will have differing fines for different violations. You may have a $100 first fine, if this was the first time that you committed something. Every community does something, I guess, a little bit different, depending on what their priorities are. As far as your scheduled fines, we will take a look at that and make sure that those are comparable, and the fees are comparable to what, what other communities have. One of the things that you can do when you're looking at the fees, and we'll probably talk about this in that second phase, is we may recommend that you increase your fees to help supplement your budget for staffing purposes. So if you are bringing on some, say, an animal control officer, and Brittany has more knowledge on this from the Beaufort County perspective, but some of those registration fees, some of those fees that are associated with the ownership of, of animals, and they can be used to offset the salary costs and the certain costs associated with that, or, you know, the people who are going to be doing the code enforcement on that. So we'll absolutely take a look at that.
And how many, how many code enforcement personnel do we have in totality zoning, building, fire, code enforcement, et cetera?
I think two in the fire marshal office. You have two code enforcement, control officers. And you have building, building, two. And then we had two, I believe, control officers. Totality between all operational divisions.
Okay, thank you.
I just have, I'm just going back to what Councilman Norzillo said. The first phase, the $10,000, is just for the ordinances, nothing else.
It's for a review of your code, so that we can make the initial start of the recommendations to sit down with administration, say, here's what we've identified as problematic ordinances. We've reviewed them, here's what we are recommending as approach, and start to work with administration. That's that second phase. But that first phase is to really dig in depth to your ordinances, break them down, look at them, and see what we can do to modify those and change those, and where there are weaknesses. One of the interesting things about, and why we're excited about this when we initially brought this up, was even Jasper County is a growing community, it's changing. You've got that, you've obviously got your incorporated areas, but outside of your incorporated areas, I see even on your agenda tonight, some of the developments that may be coming in, and the needs that are going to start presenting themselves over the next five to 10 years are going to be, you know, it's kind of exponential from a code enforcement standpoint, as that growth occurs. You need to be able to respond and have those pieces in place to respond to things as they, as they arise. But the first thing that you need to do is know where you start, where we start from, what's our slate. And we need to look at that, analyze that, find out where your weaknesses are from a code enforcement perspective, what we can do, and how we can think about strengthening those. And that does take some time, and that's why we put in there that 45 to 60-day, 60-day window to get that part done, so we can actually sit down with administration with a plan and say, this is where we think you need to strengthen your code ordinances. And then work with administration to make sure that our vision for their code, for y'all's code, reflects the personnel that y'all have, capabilities of your staff, and what y'all have available at this point, and what you think is, Brittany so aptly put it, the boots on the ground. We're not out there every day driving through, you know, I don't know, 462. We're not out there in a lot of these communities that you have. We're on Hillhead, we're in Bluffton, we're in Beaufort County, we're, we, we have worked at Jasper County for a number of years, but we don't have nearly the same sort of insight that your administration has from a daily basis. And so they can provide us that sort of fact, fact-based and practical, those practical considerations, so that we can revise that ordinance and tailor it, tailor what our recommendations are to Jasper County. And then we would go through the process of presenting it to y'all for, through the workshops, and ultimately, if you were through it all.
I apologize.
No.
For clarity, I think, if you don't mind, just a moment. I think what your question is, is where does that $10,500 end? Am I hearing that correctly?
Well, I'm, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying, I think we're both saying is, we're, I'm afraid that once you, I don't, it looks like you're saying you're going to work with staff, and you're going to tell us the staffing. But then the second, the second time you come in here, you say, no, that's going to be the second phase, and that where the $300 comes in.
So...
And I, and I don't like, you know, open it, that's an open-ended thing.
Understood. So the way that the proposal was drafted, and I apologize for stepping in. So the first three, there's four, four sets of arrows here. So this is a process that we're proposing. They identify, discuss, and approval, that is the $10,500. Explicitly in the contract, meeting with counsel, is excluded, exception being this workshop. So essentially, we're not going to be here to present unless asked. In addition to that, the implementation stage as far as addressing the ordinance and then the aftermath, meaning how many officers do you need, that is not included either. We did, in our proposal, provide the ability to assess that as we go through this process. That will be outside that $10,500, because that will, that will require additional analysis, discussion, analyzing population, the effect of these, how many animals are we talking? And only because animals is an easy one for all of us, but to look at that is a whole other undertaking. So the $10,500 is the first three steps here. It will cover our legal analysis, speaking with staff, talking to administration, going through a workshop process with you, getting that feedback, and then it is on staff and administration unless we are asked otherwise. Does that clear it up?
May I? I think that staff has a pretty good indication, talking with you collectively and individually, about what your hot button issues are, so we can help prioritize what they work on. But if Ms. Ward is saying get to that workshop, you'll have some real structure for your workshop, and some real choices to make at your workshop. And then we can figure out after that, how to be implemented here with the staff that we have, or outsourcing, or whatever. So that's the, that's the plan.
The only reason I'm asking is I just don't like an open end. You know, we have a contract, and implementation is employment of active staff and all this. That's what you say, but then you say that's not really part of it.
That's not part of the, the...
The $10,000.
Correct.
So, we're going for a half, a half a loaf here. That's what I'm trying to say.
If you would all focus on the, the study portion and the set amount, if it gets to that point, I don't know how the proposal was written, so I'm sorry I'm standing up here, but something that may ease their mind is if, if they're approving also an hourly rate, should we engage you for that? That staff would come back and ask for permission to do that at that point.
I'm not, I'm not against, my personally, I'm not against what, we need this.
Yes.
But at what cost?
Well, I just want you to...
I don't want to get in a quack.
I want you to be sure, and you're doing a good job of it, I think, of trying to figure out what you're getting, and at what point you'll have to reengage and talk about the next phase.
Have you ever worked for us before? Have you done any service for us?
One of the attorneys in our office may have been involved in the Oakley Wood litigation, and I think we may have been involved in that, we may have had a representation.
Terry Finger.
Terry Finger. We have obviously worked with towns of Hillhead, town of Beaufort, Bluffton, county Beaufort County, city Horryville. So we have worked with other local governments in this area. And that's why we had the, the reduced rate from what our typical hourly rate would be, that we wanted to make sure that we included in that representation rate.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I just want to make it clear to all of the council, though, I don't believe we worked together on anything before other than the opioid master litigation, but I work with Ms. Ward a number of projects with Beaufort County. And so that's why we're recommending this firm. She's, she's done it. And she's a workhorse, and I'll say that out front to everybody, and I trust her in this process.
Okay. Thank you, Norm. Mr. Saul, I need to recuse myself from this. Is there any other discussion?
I'd like to say one thing, and I know the reason that here is we've shared with you what our concerns were in code enforcement and all that is mine. I do have a lot of questions still, and things that I'm not going to be able to ask here. Would it be possible to table this to the next meeting, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Let's go through the discussion. Mr. Labris?
I'm, I'm good. No further questions on that end, right?
Okay, I'd like to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we table this to our next meeting in March the...
Third.
Third.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of they will say aye?
Aye.
Ayes or hand? All against?
I would like to say while we're all here, I, I like the whole idea of it all. I've just got to get my head wrapped around a few things, because as the chairman has said, this is very open-ended, but it's also very important. Thank you.
So we cut that. Fifteen, consideration of Resolution R. 2025 approving procurement of temporary housing and equipment storage at Tillman Fire Station site on a exigent basis pursuant to section 2-412 of the Jasper County, County Code of Ordinances and matters related thereto.
Yes, sir. Good evening again, Chairman and members of the council. As you indicated in the County Procurement Code, section four, that 2-412 provides for the chief procurement officer or the administrator to authorize others to make emergency procurement where normal daily operations are affected. And then again, in section 2-4-15, Jasper County Code of Ordinances provides county council upon recommendation of the administrator and county attorney, the opportunity by resolution and holding a public hearing on specific items, services, or projects from purchasing procedures required in the procurement code when you, the governing body, based upon unusual or extraordinary circumstances exempt, is in the best interest of the county and its citizens. And so, the Tillman Fire Station, again, being kind in the verbiage was nothing more than a pole barn, with some living quarters that were built within that pole barn, experienced a tree through the living quarters, I'm sorry, into the apparatus bay, resulting in what is estimated to be about a $36,000 repair to the structural elements of that, as well as there was some toxic mold intrusion into the living quarters. And our discussions with the code enforcement, fire and life safety, and the building official have indicated that, that building would have to come up to current code standards, and that would be cost prohibitive. And so we embarked on seeking out some temporary housing solutions. We visited several manufactured home dealerships between Jasper, Beaufort, Colliton, and in Orangeburg. And we encountered a mobile home that pretty much met our operational needs, as it would sit on the property and would comply with the setback requirements that the county have on our existing property. And so, the proposal that we have is that, just on a, on a, the executive briefing that we have was to make a purchase of a three-bedroom, two-bath mobile home. That mobile home is located in Orangeberry Clayton Homes dealership. The particular home has the most operational capacity versus all of the other success in the markets, as indicated in Beaufort, Jasper, Colliton, and Orangeburg. They are, when, this particular model is wind zone two rated, so it does comply with the, the codes that are necessary. We would continue to work with building planning and zoning to pull all necessary permits for demo of the building, and then the installation and, of the mobile home, and then also work with Jones Vacuum, who is an authorized evil carport dealer out of Walterboro, to erect a apparatus, temporary apparatus structure, and then utilize combination of our equipment and personnel to, again, remove the old building, and then utilize the current foundation for the installation of the temporary carport structure. And what we're asking is that the administrator have all the, the authority to sign all necessary documents for the execution of the acquisition and matters related thereto. One of the other things is, is that internally, our staff met, we evaluated our budget thoroughly, while the fire rescue... While the fire rescue building maintenance line identified 0100465095, which is line item budget for our operation budget, we internally discussed that and need, the need to restore our services to the Tillman community resulted in our desire to postpone some non-operational repairs to all fire rescue facilities that would allow us to do that without further impact or burden to our citizens and delaying out those, those minor renovations. So with that, we would just humbly request that you allow us to make this procurement.
Is there any discussion, Mr. Rowell?
Basically, with this, you're going to use existing foundations. You're going to put up the, the building and the, the modular mobile home to, to serve the area.
Yes.
I guess they'll be reutilizing whales, have it, and all of that will still be.
Yes, sir.
Also, in the area, if y'all value there for other subsequent possible trees that may need to be taken out to kind of further protect a temporary building?
Yes, sir. The, the, the tree that came down was the only, correct?
Okay.
So it has, it has been, that, the removal of that tree also was a $4,000 expenditure. So that ties into the $36,000, which got us to about the $40,000 mark is where we are. And we really, truly, wholeheartedly believe that it is not worth that investment. It, it's, it's a lose-lose for our citizens right now.
I 100% agree with, with the bill. I'm very familiar with it. The, um, the other thing is you've scrubbed your budget to kind of rob Peter to pay Paul to kind of put this there. Is there anything that is outstanding, is critical to that because obviously we've got a reputation of not repairing buildings. We wanna make sure that buildings are repaired and done. I don't want to see other buildings be sacrificed because of that if we can further move some money around if we had to.
Yes, sir.
But, but you feel confident that you can go through the rest of this fiscal year?
The rest of the fiscal year, yes, sir. That leaves give or take 120, I didn't check the, the budget performance report prior to the meeting, I apologize. But right now, it looks as though we've got about 120 that we can still focus in on doing some, some repairs to our fire stations that become critical issues. And then also the fire tower road location, the classroom, as y'all recall, we've removed the old classroom that was dilapidated and non-functional. We still can utilize headquarters as the, the classroom portion and then relocate staff out to the, that location for practical application of skills in the existing burn building that we have on site there. There was $136,000 in the fire tower road, I believe it was 136,000 in that. So, so we do have cushions.
Okay.
That if they became critical issues, so we're gonna postpone the classroom as best practical and re-align our investment strategy to restore the service to our citizens. That's our critical need in this moment.
Thank you. Mr. Saul. Chief Wells, when would a permanent structure in that store?
So this, what this temporary does is, is, is it allows us to buy time, A, to come up with an investment strategy. We're currently working through the Kuzahatchee Fire Station replacement. We're also working with the architect in that project to be able to make that station scalable so we can compress it, shrink it, expand it, however we need to do that's gonna most meet the needs of the, of the community. And so within that, once we get through the architectural process with the Kuzahatchee Station, we can certainly revisit that with MBCon and look to compress down that station, how we can make that the most practical portion in the station replacement. So Kuzahatchee is, Kuzahatchee Fire Station, we're, we're attempting to make that more of a standardization. So you'll know moving forward what we can anticipate. So standardization of fleet and, and fire stations, you'll know what that investment strategy will be as the future comes to bed.
Temporary structure could be here for maybe a couple of years.
It could be, yes, sir.
And once, once we do have that Tillman Station, the permanent station up and running, we would just sell that?
The intent would be, our, our, our hope is that we would relocate that to another area that, as growth and development goes, we could immediately get a temporary fire station in play as we, again, move through financing strategies and growth and development for the future.
Mr. Rosillo?
I'd just say temporary is what we have to do because we have to provide the services.
Yes, sir.
It's not ideal because we don't have a choice.
Councilman do? Councilman Saul's pretty much asked the questions I was gonna ask. Yes, sir. How does that affect our insurance? Immediately the pain, sometimes insurance comes and says, why?
So with a, with a fire station that's closed, that would take that area to an ISO Class 10.
Well, I'm talking about the damage insurance really.
The, so if, if all is true the way that I understand it, because I'm really, truly not the insurance specialist here, that the insurance company would cut us a check for that and then it would come in and go back into the general fund, whether or not the, the chief procurement officer or chief finance officer earmarks that for offsetting that cost. That's between her and the administrator.
I'd like to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yes.
Just as a technical point, the way that I drafted this resolution, it had two sections in it that you could use, either the emergency procurement or the exigent circumstances that would require a public hearing. We didn't advertise a public hearing on that, just, I think, moved as an emergency procurement affecting the daily operations. So the resolution that you have in your package needs just a couple of wordsmithing items to make it work if you're going to pass it as an emergency resolution, which I'd like to offer up what they are. I've marked it up, but just in the title, we changed the word in the third line, exigent basis to emergency basis, and strike in the lines after 2-412 and 2-14, 15-415, we just strike those out. We strike the fourth whereas on the first page that talks about the exemption of that one. We strike the last whereas before the now therefore, if it says you have a public hearing in this matter. And, and the last full whereas on the first page, we would pick out the words extraordinary circumstances has created an emergency situation. I've marked that up with, with the clerk, and I can fix it up for your final resolution if it seems fit for y'all to adopt that as an emergency procurement with these proposed changes.
Any further discussion on this, with this going on? You're okay with it?
I'm good with it.
You're okay with it? Like to have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion for the consideration of emergency resolution with the advantage that the county attorney provided just now for approval of the Tillman Fire Station.
I have a second? Second. Is there any comment? Ball of favor say aye and raise your hand? Aye. Anybody against? Public hearing, ordinances, and action items. Jessica Daly, Low Country Council of Governments, 2025, CD, CDVG, needs assessment, public hearing. Hello.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council. This is your annual needs assessment, public hearing. This is essentially your first step in applying for community development, block during funding.
Excuse me, if you'd like, we can.
How about now?
Thank you.
Okay. So this is step one to applying for CDVG funding. Go to the next slide. As a condition of this grant funding fair housing, the county is expected to undertake activities that promote fair housing. Everyone has the right to be treated fairly regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, family status, or national origin. And if anybody feels like they've been discriminated against, you can see on the next slide, they can contact Low Country Council of Governments at 843-473-3990. All right. In South Carolina, the CDVG program provides assistance to units of local government in improving economic opportunities and meeting community revitalization needs particularly for persons of low and moderate income. What that means here in Jasper County, you're looking at the 80% limits on that bottom line there. So a two-person household would have to make less than $44,600 a year, a four-person household less than $55,700 a year. So that's what we mean when we talk about low and moderate income. In South Carolina, the CDVG is funded through the state, which gives you extra opportunities for combining it with other grant opportunities. Next slide. So the annual allocation is best we can determine, is $19.8 million for the state. That's for all the non-entitlemented units of local government. The draft action plan is on the state Department of Commerce website. It's no longer in the comment period, but that full action plan is available if anybody wants to access that. So CDVG funding is divided into three broad categories, starting with community development, which is the majority of the funding, and then business development and regional planning. Community development is broken down in the next two slides. Starting with our spring round, which is community infrastructure, that's water, sewer, drainage, roads, and those application requests are due in March. Those are projects ranging from $50,000 to a million. And then we go to our local priorities, which that's a million dollars statewide. So that's economic development projects, public health and safety, quality of life, sustainability, resilience, and narrowing the digital divide. Also, projects ranging from $30,000 to $300,000. And those application requests are due in August and the full application in September. And then our community enrichment, which is $7.3 million for the, for the state. And there's a little bit more of a range in projects there. We talk about demolition, streetscape, regional infrastructure, public facilities, fire substations or fire trucks, health clinics and sidewalks in low to moderate income areas. The funding in there is from $50,000 to $750,000. And then we go to our ready-to-go, for which there is no deadline. This is usually a project, though, where something has come up suddenly and, but also something that will be shovel-ready within 30 days of the request. So $50,000 to $500,000, and let us know whenever you have a project that fits that. So all of those categories need to meet a national objective. There are three to choose from, starting with benefiting low to moderate income people, aiding the prevention or elimination of slums or blight and other urgent community needs posing a serious health threat. And all of these grants need to have a 10% match requirement. So if you're applying for a million dollars, you need to have the $100,000 ready to go. After a community development, then we get into business development, which is a million dollars statewide, looking at job creation, economic development, or providing essential goods and services to LMI communities. And then regional planning funds the COGS and state technical assistance as the measure of the rest, the rest of the funding. Projects and Opportunities Zone receive an additional 10 bonus points. Just so you know, the funding algorithm is online. It's very clear, a fundable application has to score at least 175 points. So 10 points would be helpful if you have something in the lower part of the county, but it's not a make or break situation. Next slide. Freshole, this is where you guys have been very successful and very fortunate. So a unit of local government can apply if you have no more than two open grants and the open grants have not exceeded 30 months. You currently have two that have exceeded 30 months, one which will close soon, and the other is, is under construction, so it'll probably keep you out for spring, but you may be eligible in fall.
Do you think you would like to?
Sure. They, the one that's still, we've just closed MarshCo, so, and the one, Chirstani is under construction, but, but nearing the end, right?
Chirto, Chirto.
Chirtoy Drainage, you're right. And then Chirstani neighborhood is the one that's closing.
It is closing now, or has.
Yes.
Hopefully.
Right.
In the process.
Soon. So you can add no more than one neighborhood, which that, one of that, one of those is closing, no more than one ready to go, and no more than one in the same area unless it's under construction. And then for that, we switch gears. Those are all grants that the county can apply for. We also have our Home Consortium, which is an organic grant program where individuals can apply for funding. It's, everybody within Beaufort, Jasper, and Colliton County and all the 21 municipalities would be eligible. Next slide. So it is a rehab program for owner-occupied, stick-built homes where the owner is income qualifying, using those numbers that we looked at earlier. And owners can contact the COT and we'll look into the situation. What we do with that program is we bring homes up to code, and we find that we don't have a lot of applications from Jasper County. So if you know folks who are seeing unoccupied housing that needs to be brought up to code, please have them contact us. And if you, as the council or the public have priority housing needs to get to the COT, please let us know by 8:30.
Can I ask a question? We don't seem to get, this is, like I said, I've been in committee as council for five years. We seem the same, same thing, especially in that place where we don't get money to rehab.
Well.
How does that, how does that work?
So the bigger problem in both Beaufort and Jasper counties is heirs' property and trailers that are needing, in need of repair and they're not eligible. And we cannot fix that at this point. There are funds that come up here out before trailers, but there's nothing right now, so.
Because I belong to an organization called, that? Families in Transition.
Okay.
And we spend an awful lot of time repairing houses. And some, some of these places need engineers, which you have, to make the money, to get the money to repair. Could you help us that way?
I mean, there's also the, the housing, the housing.
Trust fund?
Trust fund, that's what I'm trying to say. So there, there are other options that are coming along, but they're all sort of in there.
Chairman, if I could just say something to that because I've served on that advisory committee for a number of years, and I think we continue to see that the problems are because it's federal money, is bringing it up to code is always tricky. Touch something, you have to touch something else. And we did have successful applications from Jasper County Neighbors United. And any other group like that that does the work, that's usually the most successful. If someone comes in and says, I'd like to assist this community in doing upgrades, that usually is much more helpful than an individual.
Is it triggered through, is it triggered by us or somebody coming to us? And, do they go directly to ElCOG?
They go directly to ElCOG, to that group. And who's the contact?
Tiffany Dansler.
Tiffany Dansler at ElCOG, and they can go there and they're pretty much put for the, the committee who makes a recommendation on the projects. And the committee has some rough goals about what they wanna do, like so many single-family homes, but they're willing to listen to you.
If you would, could you send me that contact?
Sure.
So I could get somebody to contact you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Discussion, excuse me, Mike Skinner, Treasurer, consideration of requests for additional position note as Deputy Treasurer Assistant to the Treasurer's Office. Mr. Skinner? Is there anyone?
Ms. Holt can present that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. She's on her way. You probably read in the packet, is a creation of a new position. When we do that, it requires county council approval, and so she has worked with Mr. Skinner to put together a job description, and she's had a value set for that. It's been reviewed by our outside consultant that establishes values for positions, and she can present.
In the meantime, Mr. Chairman, could we, could that public hearing for the CDVG?
Oh, excuse me. Public hearing, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I have to. Excuse me, I have to open a public hearing. I'm sorry. Like to open a public hearing on the Low Country Council of Governments 2025 CDBG Needs Assessment. Anybody here? Hearing, no one. No one once. Twice. I declare the public hearing closed. Yes. Did I make that statement?
Chairman, yes, no. Just one final comment on that, and some of you have seen this and some of you haven't, but what we will do now that we've had this, is we will, as staff, put together some proposed priorities to you that dovetail with some of the projects that we're working on, so that we can potentially be eligible for grants for those projects. We'll bring it back to you, have a discussion with you, and ultimately, you will adopt a list of priorities, so that we can send that back to the COGS, so they have that on file.
Thank you. Okay. We're off. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The treasurer would like to add a position to his department, the deputy, a Deputy Treasurer Assistant. He's created, or we created, a job description, I think it was in your packet, and we sent it to the salary consultant for salary range, and they did put it in a pay grade, but the treasurer would like to pay that position $40,000 to $42,000 a year.
And we know what the pay grade is?
I think it was a 109, I have it.
I mean, we don't know what the...
What the, the range is.
It's like, if it's a 109, it's 33 to 52.
Yes.
It's on the range. Okay. Mr. Van Gees, any comments?
No.
Mr. Orizola?
It sounds like he's requesting right in the middle of the scheduling.
Yes.
Mr. Solz, Councilman Solz, Councilman Rob.
Middle grade is where it comes in, and where would the monies come to fund the position?
I thought he was going to be here tonight to, to present this, so excuse me for not being completely prepared, but he did mention, and I'm not sure, but the decal fund, I'm not sure if he can do that or not.
I'm just going to say, we will address that in the budget amendment.
Okay.
With you, that this purpose is preparing, and it'll have a lot of these things in it, but we'll, we'll propose how that's funded in that budget amendment.
And that position will start when approved, or be advertised when approved?
Yes, sir. As soon as you approve it, we'll get it out.
And it will be approved, and it will be in public?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that, for the request of additional position known as the Deputy Treasurer Assistant to the Treasurer's Office.
Do I have a second? Second. Is there any comment? Any comment?
Yes. And will the motion have the salary range?
Does the, does it need the salary range, or as prepared?
I think you could, you could, you could mention the, what was the number?
Pay grade.
The pay grade of 109, and the current classification system. If you're willing to do it.
I will amend my motion to reflect the salary grade of 109 to add to that.
Do we have a motion, or a discussion? Comment? I think we're a comment, right? Mr. Solz, Councilman Solz, Councilman Rob.
Problem?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand. All against, no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Consideration of second reading of ordinance 2025-02 to adopt planned development district zoning, planned development district standards and concept master plan for a tract of land consisting of approximately 223.7 acres bearing Jasper County AxMAC number 03800080002044, located along Bellinger Hill Road and known as Daily Organics PDD.
Good evening, Chairman and council members. The applicant has requested approval of a planned development district zoning designation for a commercial project, and if it's approved, it will be known as Daily Organics PDD. Included with the zoning map amendment application is a concept plan and PDD standards. The project site consists of 223.7 acre parcel located along Bellinger Hill Road. The property is currently zoned rural preservation and is developed as an existing farm that includes organic composting and mulching operation. The applicant would like to add a bagging facility, which according to the zoning ordinance requires an industrial zoning designation or a PDD that will allow this type of land use. The intent of a PDD is to encourage flexibility in the development of land to promote its most appropriate use, and to do so in a manner that will enhance public health, safety moles, and general welfare. The intent of the PDD regulations are to promote and encourage or require development in this form where appropriate in character, time and, and location, particularly in large undeveloped tracts, all PDD shall conform to the county comprehensive's future land use map. In accordance with the county's future land use map, it identifies this area as rural transition. The rural transition areas are located in southern Jasper County and will likely be under pressure to develop within the foreseeable future. Development proposals in an existing community such as Levy Limehouse should be respectful and complement the scale and character of that area. The property, as far as adjacent land uses and zoning, the property to the north, the adjacent property to the north is zoned residential, the land used is residential. To the south is zoned resource extraction, and the land used is a mining operation. The adjacent property to the west is zoned residential and PDD, and those land uses are residential and vacant property. And the adjacent property to the east is zoned residential, rural preservation, and resource extraction. Those land uses include residential, a small campground, and a mining operation. The property is accessed by Bellinger Hill Road, which is a two-lane state-maintained road. The Daily Organics Concept Master Plan, which is found in Appendix H, it's like the next to last page of the PDD document, it illustrates the proposed land use, the general layout, and access point. A master plan will be submitted separately and will provide additional information regarding the proposed layout of the development. So, this proposes the main access point, which is existent, and it's located on Bellinger Hill Road. The allowed land uses as shown on the concept plan include rural preservation, general commercial, and industrial. The density, 166 acres will be rural preservation, 36 acres will be general commercial, and 28, 21 acres will be industrial. There will be a minimum of 10% open space based on overall commercial highlands that will be provided. Stormwater best management practices will be used in the development to ensure runoff leaving the site meets South Carolina Department of Environmental Services, Office of Motion, and Coastal Resource Management, and Jasper County Standards for Water Quality. The concept map shows the commercial areas are set back 400-plus feet from Bellinger Hill Road. A landscape roadside buffer will be provided along Bellinger Hill as required by the county's zoning ordinance. At the January 6, 2025 council meeting, a public hearing was held. Since that meeting, a community meeting was held on January 28 at the Bellinger Hill Fire Department, the PDD standards have been revised to prohibit additional uses such as public utility facilities, call centers, research laboratories, regional malls, outlet centers, supermarkets, convenience stores, department stores, entertainment centers, medical and health facilities, and a note was added to state the allowed uses are limited to the existing farm, including the compost and mulching operation, the proposed bagging facility, and other uses in support of the daily organic operations. This application, the Daily Organics PDD and the concept plan, it meets all the requirements of the PDD application, and concept plan is outlined in Article 817 of the Jasper County Zoning Ordinance. Planning Commission has, they've reviewed this, and they do recommend approval of the PDD.
Any discussions, Mr. Van Gees? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you so much. How did the town hall meeting go? Was there a town hall meeting with those folks?
Yes, myself and Chairman Kemp were there, and I thought it was very informative for everybody in the room. And I thought the community, while they had some concerns, I think most of their fears were laid in that meeting, and I think everybody, I don't think there was any strong objection coming out of that. If there were any, I didn't perceive it that way.
Okay. I think most of the objections in that meeting were not from Daily Organics, but from other locations for traffic on that. And they, this is not, from my understanding, this is not a increase in business, it's just the way they do the business. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
DEHEC is not going to, they have to go back to DEHEC if they want to increase.
Yeah.
That's right, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm out of water. This way.
That's okay. They already operate under a DEHEC permit. In order to do the bagging facility, they need to just change that DEHEC permit, so they do fall under purview of South Carolina, it's now Department of Environmental Services. And this is just approving the concept plan and the PDD standards. They will still need to come back for a master plan when they're ready to build that facility.
Mr. Solz, or Councilman Solz, yeah.
Since the last meeting, we had some folks come in, I believe all their concerns were addressed, those that were questionable are now in favor of, so I'm good with everything.
I just have one question about the rural preservation.
Yes, sir.
How does, is there any way they can change that? I mean, it just, I don't think they will. It's just, what happens if they move, or they leave, or it's, there's too many times I've noticed that, good intentions, we want to be good neighbors. All of a sudden, they sell, or something happens, and they give it away, and then, how are we protected that way?
So, the zoning does go with the property, and in addition, in this case, there will be a PDD document that regulates it. In the absence of where they don't have any special standards adopted in their PDD, they have to refer to the county ordinance. Any changes outside of what you approve, as far as, I'll back up just a minute. The master plan comes to Planning Commission. The master plan is reviewed against the concept plan and the PDD document, so we'll go through all of that when a fire tooth comb, and make sure all of that's in order. Once that's approved, they're required to come back to amend the master plan. If they want to do anything different than what the PDD document approves, they have to come back to you. The master plan requires amendment by Planning Commission, but any changes from, you know, a lot of times if they're amending their master plan, it may be that they need to change their PDD document. That goes back to Planning Commission for review, and then recommended back to the county council.
The woman last comment is one of the few times I've ever been to a public comment that people were bored, or said yes, they would like them, and they knew it, and all that, just like, no. Anyway, do I have a motion? Mr. Van Gees, oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye, raise your hand. All against, that's second reading. Consideration of second reading of ordinance O-2025-03 approving a development agreement for the Daily Organics Development Property consisting of approximately 223 acres, more or less owned by Bellinger Hill Properties LLC in the Bellinger Hill area of Jasper County, South Carolina, swayed into the South Carolina Local Government Development Agreement Act and Article 4, Title 20 of the Code of Ordinances of Jasper County, authorizing the chairman, chairperson of the Jasper County Council to execute the development agreement and matters related thereof. Mr. Tannen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of council, as you recall, in our last meeting, I had pointed out that there had been some questions raised about four items regarding this project development agreement that dealt around traffic in the public roads, mitigation of anything, noise restrictions, hours of hour operation concerns, and any development fees. And I believe I was asked to go back and ask for the developer to address these. I have discussed by email these questions, and have received a request, rather than a proposal for these, a request that he be allowed to discuss, not he, the developer's attorney and the developer be allowed to discuss this in executive session. I discussed with the council chairman, and the council chairman was not inclined to have that done at this particular point. So, I have noted the changes to the development agreement that's before you that address those four, those four items particularly. What I had done is provided some information from other development agreements that we have had that dealt with hours of operations and noise control of site, and development fees on things like that. So, I don't know where we are on this, other than to say, I have taken the time to make changes to about eight pages that would be a structure for, to discuss hours of operation, for example, which I took out, that says there's two types of operations. You have the heavy equipment, noisy operation with the mulching machines, that would propose a narrower operational time during the daytime and not on weekends, as opposed to retail wholesaling operation where you're not using heavy equipment, that would include allowing a Saturday operation and extended hours during the work week. So, that's the type of thing I am proposing for the consideration. I haven't got before you, because I just found this out last week, that we didn't have anything to put in the package on that. I've also proposed by looking at another development agreement, very foreshortened development fees that include a period of time, the current operation is not subject to what we call the developer fees, because it's existing. Any expansion could potentially trigger some additional money, $660 for public safety per thousand feet, and traffic at about the same rate, with the understanding that we don't expect a whole lot of extra traffic out there. But I put a provision in there that says, after a period of time or a certain build, we'd look at it to see if the traffic, truck traffic particularly, has caused any deterioration of the road system out there that might need addressing, and if so, come up with a proposal to address that, to move forward. The noise restrictions, I basically picked up the same noise restrictions that we have on the adjacent mining operation at Landier Development, the Granger property over there, which are 55 dBs, 1,000 feet off decibels from the boundary of the property. So, I proposed that in there. Those are the basic things that I tried to address in here, other than some cleanups in there that I found that, to clarify, that we're not accepting roads, we're not accepting stormwater, that's normal. stormwater, that's normal things that we do not take, that I, there's a couple of ambiguities in there that I want to clarify. So I have some proposals I'd like to bring forward. You have not had a chance to look at them and he has not, the developer has not had a chance to look at them yet. Again, he may want to discuss why he might need them or why he wanted to discuss them in a different setting than the open council meeting, but my recommendation is that we do address those concerns that I was made aware of through the council about hours of operation and noise particularly, and try to treat them the same way as we treat other developers coming in of a larger scale. And I'm happy to try and answer any questions, but those were my concerns that I had after listening to this council for the last two meetings and the public hearings. I did not have the benefit of being of the, at the committee meeting to see what you had, but I understand that they tried to address those items, but I think they ought to be memorialized in the development agreement as to what the standards are. I'm happy to pass out any, for future reference, I have those corrected pages, but there's, there is in a discussion format for the developer and his attorney. But I'll, I can pass those out to you after the meeting. We do have a third reading and any significant change that you had made before third reading, I would, I think it's been our custom to have an additional, send an additional public hearing before third reading if there's any change of substance between second, third reading. Of course, it's your prerogative to have second reading, table it, have a workshop, executive session, whatever y'all want to do, that's up to you.
As, just as a clarification, the reason I didn't want to go executive session, I had a feel it was executive session material. It was just operation and all that, which should be public. So I just wanted to say that. Do I have any discussion? Mr. Ral.
With the language that the Kent attorney just provided us, is there any special thing that we need to do tonight with that language?
I hate to say that it, that it's not ready for primetime, but it's, it's areas of discussion. I mean, the, you know, I've got a structure in there. The hours of operation are clearly the arbitrary decision that I made based on looking at something else with no other input from anyone else. I can tell you where this stuff came from, you can read it. I don't want to hold things up, but whatever you do tonight, I think you're going to have to need to take another hard look at it in a final version that's acceptable to the developer and for your consideration.
Mr. Solz, or Councilor Solz.
How does we do that exactly?
Well, in all fairness to the developer and the owner, he needs to look at this and say, I can accept these terms or not, or make a suggestion and bring it back to you.
Chairman.
And I'm not trying to sandbag it, but I didn't, wasn't trying to sandbag him, I just had to come up with something to bring to y'all for consideration because I don't believe that the agreement that you have in there covers everything that we need to cover at this point.
Mr. Razzillo, councilman.
So we could go ahead and prove the second reading and then take care of all this at the third reading.
Yes, sir.
And so probably prudent to go ahead and move on to the next without any.
That's up to you. I mean, there have been, at other times, there's been some hesitancy to have a second reading when you expect to have substantive changes going into third reading. It's not, other counties allow this third reading to have those changes brought forward. It's just a matter of your prerogative, what you want to do.
Mr. Engle, or Councilor Engle. You have any, just go ahead, can we table? Can we just table?
Good.
Till it gets straightened out? If you would like. Okay. Would you like to have, I'd like to have a motion.
I'd like to have a motion to table this till, until May 3rd.
March 3rd.
Sorry.
Second?
Second.
Comment?
I think it's prudent. They haven't heard anything. Just let's make it clear so we're not hassling. We'll do it that way. That's my feeling. So I'll just give the attorney five minutes, two minutes if you would like to talk.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's for an attorney, that's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Appreciate the county administrator as well as Mr. Tetter working with us. The reason why we asked for an executive session is because this is a contractual matter. Development agreement is a contract between development, the developer and the county who wanted to discuss these items as Mr. Tetter shared these, right until we really haven't had a chance to substantively discuss and to determine what council may like to see with respect to these items. We had not heard significant comments with respect to hours of operation or even from the adjacent neighbors about noise. As a matter of fact, during the committee meeting, I think most of those who live nearby, if not all who live nearby, spoke and expressed no concerns about these items. And we certainly opened to discussing them, but that's why we wanted you to expedite time to have a discussion, incident to this being a contractual matter, to iron out those items and certainly the public document would be available for any review. But that was a concern to be expressed. But certainly happened to have discussions. If we can do so expeditiously, we'd love to move this matter along as quickly as possible to resolution and appreciate the county working with us on that.
You meet with the attorney, we'll set that up and he can give us his brief. So next time we'll have something that's behind you. I have a motion on the floor to, to, what did I have? Table the motion till March 3rd. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Aye. All against? It's been moved to March 3rd. Motion, consideration of this, consideration of the first reading of an ordinance authorizing execution and delivery of fee in lieu of ad valorem tax agreement by and between Jasper County, South Carolina and Project Center with respect to certain economic development property in the county providing for the payment of fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for special source revenue credits and other matters relating to thereof. Project Center.
Mr. Tetter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. This is something that we have talked about before. We previously passed an inducement resolution back in the fall when this project first came forward. This is a manufacturing facility, not a distribution facility. It's going to potentially have 500-plus jobs with build-out. It's an electric conductor manufacturing. They have a proprietary process to create conductors for electricity, which are very, very efficient and revolutionary almost. We're happy to have this going on. Commerce is very supportive of this. There is an existing fee in lieu on the property. This is the Claris property down at Southern End of County in Hartville, within the city of Hartville. They need additional, commerce has asked us through the Southern Carolina Alliance to come up with additional incentive in the FLO agreement to get into a 50% special source revenue credit on that, which Commerce Department has requested us to do. It's moving forward fast now after the holidays. There was a little bit of delay over the holiday period in getting some of the approvals necessary to move some federal funding down from another state to us as the winning state. That's in process, or has been processed. We now have at least signed on the area over there. We're now in the nitty-gritty of trying to adjust the FLO agreement with this, as these documents, you see, there may be some fine tuning by the time we get to second reading, which is scheduled in Hartville on March 3rd at this particular point. The, there'll be an announcement, March 6th. You should be getting an invitation to groundbreaking with dignitaries, including our governor there. And then we'll be moving to the final reading after that. So it's the request of the staff that we support this project, this one move, having first reading on this, understanding there'll be some tweaks and adjustments as we try and adjust the existing FLO to meet the needs of the equipment installation, which most of this investment from this particular company will be on equipment into an existing building and then a new, as I understand it, a building to be completed in a future phase. Very exciting proposition because the jobs are projected to average $60,000, $65,000 with benefits. So it's a, it's a good way for the county.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Ral?
No.
Mr. Solz? Or Councilor. Captain, Mr. Razzillo?
Do you know how many jobs are projected?
6,500.
Yeah, so the build-out is going to be 570, but they're committing to 460 this contract and all that.
100 jobs, averaging $65,000 is a.
Clawback.
Yeah. Councilor Engle?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any comment? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All against?
Thank you, sir.
Third.
Full room.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I want to start off with exit three. Just a quick reminder about where we are with exit three. After the additional $35 million grant was awarded to us, just remind everyone that this has been a 14-year-plus project and the developer is represented by Maynard Nexon, Parker Poe represents the county, and Al Linca and Nels represents the city. All of those attorneys are paid for by the developer. And so when we tell you what we think the next step is, we have some good attorneys working for us advising us and coordinating with those other attorneys along the way and doing that. The additional grant of $35 million and the extension of the loan was the last effort that happened at the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank. Part of the funding is also $13.5 million pledged from the county of 2016 transportation sales tax funds. Of that 13.5, 3.4 was needed immediately a few years ago to be sent to the Department of Transportation and that is paying for engineering services to coordinate the construction of exit three and those plans with the widening of I-95. So of the 3.4 million that's been up there, we have processed 20 separate draws on that money and we spent about 50% of that money. So we have about 1.7 left to spend out of that. And then the remaining 10.1 will be spent once the project gets underway. So I wanted to give you a quick update where we are with what your next steps are. The county council, after this was awarded, has done everything they need to empower me to sign off when our attorneys say it's okay to do so in the IGA with the other parties. And so we're just waiting for all that to happen. If there is any need for us as staff to come back to you for additional approvals of any sort, we certainly will. And we're just waiting for the project to be bid next month. And we received word just a week or so ago that the developer has received its final permitting from the Army Corps of Engineers, which is very exciting news. So more to come later on that, but I wanted to just give you a quick update of where we are. And that kind of transitioned into the project you see before you, which is a project that kind of jumped in front of all our other work today. And Mr. Tetter and Mr. Iwanaki were very generous with their time in trying to work through it. But the developer of the tract is working through some issues and part of those issues, as you may know, is the new Dominion power lines, the high voltage transmission lines that are being put up through that property. And so what on their particular property that they have is they have a situation where we have an existing drainage canal from 1970 on that property and its Dominion needs to cross the drainage channel. And so I'll show you what we're working on. That's the handout Mr. Tetter just sent to you and working with their engineers today. You'll see the two circles, that's where the crossings will be of the power lines, the transmission lines across county easement. And so when we grant an easement with county, it is an action that we bring to you in an ordinance forum and the county council approves an easement. Since this is an existing easement, we're trying to work out with the parties and since time is of the essence, an acknowledgement of the easement. In other words, we're working on a document that will acknowledge that we, the county, have an easement and remind them of some qualifications that they will have to meet in order to put the lines across the drainage canal. So I thank Mr. Iwanaki for his help and some good suggestions and we're putting that together. Just wanted you to be aware of that this is something we're going to do particularly for this property so that they can get moving with that as an acknowledgement of the existing And there's the final detail of where it is and what we will have to do. We'll have restrictions in there, for instance, that they can't, you know, put the poles too close to the edges of the channel. We'll have some qualifications about potentially when we work underneath the lines, so forth and so on. So appreciate your patience and let me explain that to you, but that was sort of some tedious work that we're doing this afternoon and wanted you to be aware of it should you hear of anything from the developer or Dominion on that matter. If I can move on to number two in my report concerns short-term rentals. Some of our enforcement efforts for business licenses have uncovered some short-term rentals that were in some of the rural parts of the county that were operating. And they were operating contrary to the zoning and so they were shut down. We didn't have too much pushback, I think, Ms. Wagner, from some of those people, but there are several, I must say. Yeah? Didn't you say five to seven, something like that?
Something like that.
Okay. And it dawned on us that we hadn't had any knowledge of it, so, you know, I thought we had, we're a little different and we weren't going to have to deal with the short-term rental issues like Hilton Head or other places. But it's quite popular now to rent a place in the rural area of Jasper County, which I think is kind of flattering. And some of these people who had it, like I said, they've been wonderful to work with, but I think it's worthy of a little more exploration with the planning commission about whether or not this is something you may want to allow in some certain areas. And so we're going to start, I want to talk with Ms. Wagner, I'm going to start that process with the planning commission just to see if they're interested in trying to review that and perhaps recommending something to you that would allow short-term rentals in some of the areas.
Can you tell me what a short-term rental is versus?
Airbnb or the VRBO, that kind of thing.
Okay, that's the type thing?
Yes.
Not something like, I guess, the golf course has rentals?
Right. This is more on the public market, renting out your place or a secondary home on your property, that kind of thing. And so we have some, I'm sure we have some home office type regulations and it's just a whole. whole nother area to get into to see if we can make it make sense in Jasper County. I think it's worthy of. You're welcome. The other item I had was number three was about delinquent tax sales and overages. I know you've all received the information said in responding to Reverend Galloway in the letter that I received, that we would kind of go through that real quickly. Speaking with the chairman, I think it's worthy of a workshop, not just to talk about the overages, but to talk about the tax sale process in general. It is pretty complicated, and there's some pitfalls that every group and every place falls into, and try to dodge those. But I think it'd be a great educational process to go through exactly how a tax sale happens, what goes wrong typically, the labor that's involved in preparing the deeds and the transfers of property. And we have some ideas as staff that we would like to advance to you that perhaps could make sure that we're spending money-wise. It costs an awful lot of money to go after some of these properties and put them in the tax sale when they're very small amounts. So we'll just leave that as a teaser, but we would like to have a workshop with you and talk about some of these things. In any event, Mr. Galloway asked about tax, delinquent tax sale overages, and that's simply the amount that is paid by the bidder over the amount it's due in taxes. And that is potentially available to the person who loses their property in the end, right? If that, if those funds aren't claimed or assigned within a five-year period, the county is supposed to eschew those funds, which means, you know, move them into the general fund. We are not compliant right now in doing that, and so we have a plan in place to do that, but also to potentially segregate those funds so that we can account for them and show them just in case you have the situation showing up needing the funding, we would have it all accounted for. So first question was, what were the delinquent sales in previous years and how were the overages handled? My response was that we had several years of them and approximately twenty-five properties from the last one, which was two thousand twenty-two, I think, that we're working on. Number two was, what is the current policy for addressing the overages? In other words, what type of actions does the county take in attempting to reimburse funds collected in excess of the taxes? For example, does the county contact such individuals by mail? And of course, our response was certified mailings are done twenty to forty-five days before the end of the one-year redemption period. After tax deeds are prepared and delivered, the sale proceeds remaining after reconciliation fees and costs are determined, a letter is sent to the last owner of record at the time of the sale and after reconciliation. Final question, I think, no, next to the final question. If we contact people by U.S. mail, does the county make a listing of such individuals available on their website? And the answer is, we do not post a list on our website. The list is available upon filling out a Freedom of Information Act request. And in the information I provided, sort of hinted at why we don't do that. There are other counties that have had trouble with outside entities working with property owners who may have had collection agencies basically taking advantage of some of these people. And so we, there are two court orders from Aiken County that were included in the information. And then the final question was, does the county announce the availability of overage funds in a local newspaper? And the answer is no, we do not. I think we can make some improvements in at least explaining the process a little bit, maybe online on our website, but I think this is ripe for a workshop so that everybody can understand the totality of it, and we can talk about maybe some actions for improvement and education. You have any questions?
I do. Because you've mentioned the website several times.
Yes.
I've got more complaints in the last two weeks about our website than anything else. Is that, how can we rectify that?
Well, they made some changes to it, and I'm receiving some of the same feedback. Those changes are not favorable. So we'll have a discussion with IT and see if we can try to revert back to some.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
New Zealand? Counselor Solz?
Well, custom privileges or just comments?
Just comments. I just want to, just want to say, I've been investigating this. When Reverend Galloway came up and said we were stealing, that shook my bottom lip a little bit, and I investigated. We aren't stealing. We just, it's a little bit of not knowledge, no knowledge, or not understanding the whole situation.
Right.
And everything like that. I just want to be clear on that, that I did investigate it myself. I went up to Reverend Galloway and said, talked to him about what the administrator gave me, and he understood. And I said, we can clean a lot of things up and we can be more proactive. And that's all I can say. So thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. Final item I had, Mr. Chairman, was a proposed budget timeline. I put Ms. Burgess on the spot. I know we've got to begin budget work soon, and that's going to be pretty tedious. And so I think she has a proposed outline schedule that she wanted to just run through and discuss with you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of Council. I can't believe that you would call a budget process tedious. Anyway, the timeline, currently, the staff has started working on their department requests, and that should be finished sometime, probably the first week or so in March. And after that, I will, the assessor will be giving us the assessed values, and we will begin fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six revenue estimate. And shortly after that, when we have all of those pieces together, the revenue, anticipated revenue and the expenditures, Mr. Fulgham and I meet to review it, go over it, and you will have the department requests and the administrative, administration recommendation by the end of April, and, or at least that's the plan. And then, in the meantime, we will start having budget workshops. We're planning to start having some budget workshops with agencies or department presentations, beginning the second meeting in March and continuing with every meeting until the, we could go up to the very final meeting, which we currently have as June 2nd, which is where the third reading of the budget would be approved. That might create a little bit of an issue if there are any changes as a result of any sort of budget workshop on that date. We don't have anything scheduled for the mid-June because we have the, there's a holiday in there. So right now, we just have it scheduled for, to be finalized by June 2nd. So if you have any questions or concerns, we also will have included in that, the school district will make a presentation at some point. I have not yet talked to Mr. Zimmerman or the superintendent yet about when they would like to make it, but that will be in there somewhere along with, will bring to you the recommendations from the state tax accommodations, tax advisory committee for the ongoing budget for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, and just kind of relay some conversations I've had with the chairman. As far as the appropriations, that is, there are a lot of them, right? And they take up several meetings, and so there may be some comments about how we may want to do that differently this year. We have the benefit of having brand-new council members, right? And so we may, just as open for discussion, we may want to do a workshop where we just talk about the budget, major revenues, major expenditures, and just get you comfortable with the budget itself before we put a new budget in place. What your thoughts are?
I'm good with it. I'd love to do it.
Mr. Counselor? Counselor Solz?
I agree wholeheartedly with it. I think getting it sooner than later is good. That way, we can make educated decisions as we kind of move forward with the budget process.
Could you put out a, give us, give us an email on three dates that you've prepared?
Yes, sir, we will. And I just keep in mind, I know from her budget perspective, we don't know revenues until a little later in the game, but since, if you're new, that was my suggestion, that we just get together and talk about the budget without those numbers, just revenues and expenditures. We can just kind of review the last year's budget with you so that you'll know when they come in, because it's going to be sort of a mad rush for you at the end, I think.
How we handle the budget, too? I mean, what workshops we have, what workshops are going to consist of?
With this, yeah. So with the school board?
Yes.
They're going to do a presentation. So could you kind of put that in when we discuss this other, you know, the relationship with the school board, budget, our budget, and how they, you know, they're coming forward for a reason, and I just want to get a more of a.
Yes, sir. We can have a little explanation about how they, they do not have fiscal autonomy here in Jasper County, and that you do in fact approve their mileage and how that processes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry I talked a long time tonight, but that concludes my report, unless, of course, you have any questions with me.
Counselor, any comments and discussion? Counselor Ral?
I'll keep it brief tonight. I'd like to thank the HR and Risk Management Department again for the savings that they have provided to the county. If you kind of think of it in perspective, it's almost the value of a mill with what they're doing, so that's definitely a reduction for the county. So kudos to them for making sure that they're saving the county mo, excuse me, money. Secondly, and lastly, I did reach out to the administrator who talked to DOT. They will be starting back work on four sixty-two Knocklin Woods the first week of March, hopefully to get that road back drivable and passable. Other than that, that's all I have tonight.
Counselor Solz?
Couple of things. Went and visited Bexbury Land and checking on it, and I want to thank the chairman and especially Bill Hager and the delegation on our place for, in a recreation category for a BMX track. Been able to transfer that back to the county so that we can use it to update some of our boat landings, and Bexbury is in terrible condition. So there's a couple elements, I think, turn the bridge down in the Leavy area, but we'll have those monies to recover some of our boat landings and fix them up. Met with a business guy in Leavy just looking into an expansion and talk with them, see what they have on their minds. Couple of weeks ago, had our Southern Carolina Alliance Board Retreat. We had Ted Abernathy there. He's a national-recognized economic development consultant, and went over goals, initiatives, visions, things that the board members have on their minds, and to be more strategic in how the SEAs of the region for all seven counties approach the economic development, certain things such as workforce housing, workforce development, things of that nature as well. So it was very informative. I too talked with DOT guy, Mike Peely, Kelsey Monroe, and he told me that, because I asked him, I'm like, how many weeks is it going to be in? He told me this morning that it was going for this afternoon that they were going to start on four sixty-two when they finish Langfordville. So I've heard a bunch of different scenarios, but they know if they are on their case and they want to see four sixty-two finished, but at least they're working to get Langfordville work finished. But apparently, that was what he texted me about five o'clock this afternoon, so hopefully that'll be sooner than later. The Jasper original youth baseball complex has come along well on out there last week, and talked with some of the county guys that were working out there, new dugouts, people working on fields, several of the items out there. And I know Mr. Danny Lucas, I guess, was kind of overseeing that. I know that he had a medical event, and I keep him and his family in our prayers, and hopefully he's recovering from that. But the JR YB complex has really come along good, and that's something that's been long overdue. Also, Smitty Coolidge's family about, I think, close to twenty, twenty years ago maybe, were a huge part in getting that field into the condition it was with the concessions and everything. And I know that's near and dear to Smitty and his family, that complex out there coaching and growing up here. So we'll get it refurbished, and it's well underway, Smitty. And I think that's about everything, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Porzillo?
We'd like to say last Tuesday, myself, Councilman Kemp, and Councilman Ral went to Columbia to watch the governor present Duane Swager with the Order of Palmetto. If anybody doesn't know, it's the highest order that can be given in the state of South Carolina to an individual. It was wonderful. Also, I went to Hardyville. They brought in people from the public who might be affected in the Pewsburg area with the XC3, and they wanted their input. I thought that was wonderful. And he asked that things that they might want to see in that area, whether it be parks, sidewalks, whatever, whatever you ask for, and they had several. I thought that was wonderful. I do think that myself, I haven't been to Ridgeland and met with that council, but I do have a strong opinion that Jasper, Ridgeland, Hardyville need to work together, and I think that's going to happen. I will say that there was some mention about some folks from this council visiting some property that may be coming forward. And I think, I think for myself, I did visit that property. I think everybody should. I think we need to be well aware of everything that's going on with these things, and I'm assuming that Ridgeland has done the same. But I find out, and I'll sit down and meet with these folks, some of them I don't know, some of them I do. But I need to get better acquainted with Ridgeland. I'm very acquainted with Hardyville, and that's all I have.
Counselor.
So I think this week, the big thing for me was working with JARM and the sheriff and the administration on trying to figure out how we move forward in the future with the animals in this area. And I think every rescue's being overrun right now, and we're trying to come up with some, some solutions and, which is why earlier I said we're putting together a task force committee from people, different areas, Beaufort County, Jasper, different rescues. And Chairman Kemp gave me some stuff on some ordinances that were being worked on, I think, by Mr. Tetter. And so we're kind of going through all that, trying to figure out how we can make this all work and have it a better place. And we did. I think there was something mentioned about us going to some property, which you'll find me, if you ask me to go somewhere, I will go there. I think it's important for me to go to speak to people, find out what the situations are, and, you know, knowledge is power. So I'm very big on, if somebody asks me to do something, I'll go. I think it's worth talking. That's why I ran. And as far as transparency, there will be full transparency, especially on that development. I think there'll be a workshop probably done on it. But there'll be good things coming in the future, because all of us want to make Jasper County better, and that's why we're here. And that's about it.
I'm going to bring up that same subject.
Yep.
We did go, but it wasn't a secret. This whole council was informed of afterward of what we were going in, so that was it. If we have more than that, it becomes a meeting, and sometimes it just doesn't work, so we have to bring it up. We're bringing, being educated ourselves to be the right stewards of our land. I attended the Beaufort-Jasper Water Underserved Committee. It's a new committee. Well, it's been reformed, and they're the ones that brought the grant for Leavy, and they're looking at other ones. They are looking at Old Bailey. I didn't realize this, but Old Bailey, the Old Bailey water is above ground. It's just laying there like a hose. So they're now trying to get money in. The underserved committee got Beaufort-Jasper to go in there and.
The underserved committee got Beaufort-Jasper to go in there and put the lines underground, which is a big thing. And they're looking at Beaufort County with their septic, which has been there since 1950. So those septics are pretty old. And next meeting is March 3rd, and it's going to be in Hardyville. And February 24th at 1:00 p.m. in Council Chambers, the Transportation Referendum Advisory Committee will be meeting, and we'll be discussing the priorities about green space, green, yeah, green space, and about budget. And that's about it. Executive session. A public body may hold a meeting close to the public for one or more of the following reasons. One, a discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body, or the appointment of a person to a public body, employer review. Discussion of matters relating to the proposed location expansion or provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. We go into executive session to discuss items the chairman just laid out.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
I'd like to have a motion to command executive session.
Make a motion to command executive session.
Second?
Second.
Are there any more? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any motions?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a performance agreement for the previous the county accepted SISA grant for the Southland Department of Commerce in the amount of $75,000 in support of Project Veggie and authorizing the chairman of the county council to execute the performance acceptance documents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Pass.
I'd like to make a motion to the chairman.
Make a motion to the chairman.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, stand up.